Okay. It's December 7th, 2021. It's 4:00 PM. We'll open the Planning Commission meeting. The Chair requests the confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act request has been provided.
I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice of the meeting was met.
Thank you. Have the roll call?
Yeah, we'll call roll of members in attendance, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Bernhardt.
Here.
Commissioner Gilmore, Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Sell.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Chair Hay.
Here.
That gives us an attendance of six members, and that constitutes a quorum. So with our Kansas Open Meetings Act obligations being met and having a quorum, we can now proceed with today's business.
Thank you, Dean. Look for approval of the minutes of the November 16th meeting.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move on to new business.
We have a couple of public hearing items that we advertise for today's meeting. The first one is item 3.1, and that is an application filed by Megan Carolyn seeking approval of a conditional use permit, and that conditional use permit is to establish and operate a tobacco shop and e-cigarette establishment, also known as a vape shop, in a C3 shopping center zoning district. The property that's the subject of this application is the former House of Sight and Sound building, which is located at the southwest corner of Ellsworth and South Santa Fe, and addressed as 1300 South Santa Fe. Mr. Hers is going to be presenting this item.
Thank you. So the subject property is the former House of Sight and Sound, as Mr. Andrew noted. I have a graphic of it or an aerial photo on the screen, and I'll give you kind of some context of the surrounding area and look at the zoning. So the subject property itself is Zone C3, which is our shopping center district, and the properties to the north and south and east are all C3 as well, with the adjacent residential properties to the west being R2, then moving down into R1. So if we kind of get a bird's eye view of the corridor of South Santa Fe, you can see that there is a mixture of C3 properties along the frontage of Santa Fe, and then slowly working or transitioning from there into residential with a band of R2 on each side, and then your R1 single family as you move further out from the corridor that leads down into Santa Fe. So that's the surrounding area. The property is Zone C3, and we'll talk a little bit about the history of vape shops or electronic cigarettes, as it's called in the code. Same thing, but it's an electronic device that is used with different types of liquids that is similar to smoking tobacco, but there's usually a nicotine product that goes with it. Those are conditional use as well as smoke shops. So up until 2014, the code, the zoning ordinance in Salina was silent as to what to do with hookah bars, vape bars, e-cigarette lounges, things of that nature. And this was kind of a growing trend at that time in 2014, and we had a couple of businesses that were wanting to open up in Salina for electronic cigarette operations, and we as staff weren't really sure how to deal with it. We spoke to the Planning Commission and City Commission about it, and the City Commission in March of 2014 actually put a 90-day moratorium, so they instituted a 90-day moratorium, meaning that they were going to set this aside, set enforcement aside, set approval aside on all of this so that they could review, research, and make a decision of how they wanted to proceed with dealing with electronic cigarette or e-cigs or vaping, as well as hookah bars and things like that. The initial moratorium did not include any language or moratorium to new tobacco shops or smoke shops, so that was not included in the initial moratorium, but did come in later on as we went through the process. And so our staff reviewed and looked at imperial evidence. There was a, through planning organizations as well as real estate organizations, this was, these uses, tobacco shops and vape shops were considered LULU's or local unwanted land uses, meaning they were land uses that were perceived, right or wrong, to have negative impacts on neighborhoods, and they were lumped together with things such as alcohol sales, pawn shops, gun shops, payday loan companies, tattoo parlors, body piercing studios, massage parlors, parlors and sexual oriented businesses. And so as we went through and conducted that research, in May of 2014, the Planning Commission directed staff and initiated a text amendment to define what these types of uses are. So defining what electronic cigarettes were, electronic cigarette establishments, as well as tobacco shops and hookah bars. And then at their July 2014 meeting, they went a step further, and in addition to the definitions, we talked about where these uses should be permitted, and a motion was made and recommended to the City Commission that both e-cigarettes and tobacco shops be added to the list of conditional uses for all the commercial districts except for our C1 and C7 districts, and that they be listed as permitted uses in the I2 and I3 districts. So that was the recommendation that was made to the City Commission when the City Commission heard the item in August of 2014. What they ended up approving was an ordinance that was very similar to what the Planning Commission recommended. However, they did have a modification, and instead of having electronic cigarettes and tobacco shops being conditional or permitted uses in the I2 and I3, they made them conditional uses. So the conditional uses for electronic cigarettes and tobacco shops is currently allowed as a conditional use in all commercial districts except for C1 and C7, and are also conditional uses in the I2 and I3. And after that, we've had a number of applications for e-cigarette stores. We have a Salina Vapes that was on East Iron. We have a Juicy's Vapor Lounge in Galaxy Center. We have an application for another Juicy's Vapor Lounge on East Iron as well that was not approved by the Plan Commission. We had a Yogi's Vape Lounge in the Craft Manor that was approved, a Cloud Cafe in Sunset Manor that was approved, and with the most recent vape shop being Willie's Vape, which is across the street on the north side of Crawford, across from Sunset Manor. And so those have been the electronic cigarette establishments that the Planning Commission has reviewed in the past. We don't have any applications that have been approved for smoke shops. We do have Pat or Pac Rat Smokes located in a C5 zoning district near the corner of Crawford and Broadway, and that smoke shop was established before the adoption of this regulation and was approved as a convenience store. And so it's what we would call a pre-existing non-conforming use, because it was approved prior to the adoption of our current regulations. There's also a Smokes for Less that is located in the Craft Manor that we don't have a conditional use permit for, so we can't really speak as to how that became into operation. That's something the staff will have to look into. And there's also a cigar shop that is an accessory use to Cave Divers South. And what that means is Cave Divers, their primary business is a packaged liquor store, but they do have a, what we would consider a minor portion of their sales going to cigar sales, which does not technically meet the definition of a tobacco shop. So it's an accessory use and not a tobacco shop, because it's a accessory use to a liquor store. So that brings us to the current application, and what the applicant has done is she has, Megan Caroline, she has purchased 1300, or is a tenant of 1300 South Santa Fe, and she has recently moved in there and is, began operations with selling kratom, CBD oils and other essential oils, and she's looking to expand to add vaping products as well as tobacco shop products in that location. So the role of the Planning Commission is to look at the site and where the vape shop and tobacco shop is being proposed, and reviewing and analyzing to see if it is, if this is an appropriate area for that use, and if it would be compatible to the surrounding area. So the first thing we look at is the zoning ordinance, and I'll pull up a survey that we have to kind of tell the story of how we got to where we are. So as the aerial photo, you can see the rooftop, and you see that there's a little bit of a different rooftop here, and there's a little bit of a different rooftop here. And what that shows is the progression of development of the building. So in 1957, there were two structures that were constructed on this property with permits, and that is a structure that's on the northwest corner and one on the northeast, and that's labeled as existing building on this survey that we have. And in 1993, an application was filed to essentially connect those existing buildings to create one existing structure. Now, when the buildings were originally permitted, they were permitted with zero setbacks along Ellsworth, as well as the alley on the west, and only one foot three inch setback along Santa Fe. And so that means it's a non-conforming or grandfathered structure. Those two structures, rather, because it was two structures at the time, were grandfathered structures. The non-conforming section of the code allows you to do additions, modifications and maintenance to non-conforming buildings as long as you do not increase the non-conforming bulk, meaning you're not creating a, you're not deviating from the requirements of the zoning code any more than they've already been deviated from previously. And so what that means is that they were able to connect the two buildings with a zero setback as long as they were not increasing the non-conforming bulk, which they didn't. So that was done as an infill project in 1993. The result of that project is a 3,480 square foot building, and the applicant has shared with us how she is proposing to use the facility as well as the parking lot, and I've got that on the overhead here. I've got it split out into different uses, and I've zoomed in just so you can see a little bit clearer. So this represents the front door that leads to the parking lot. As you come in, there is an 11,000, a little over 11,000 square foot general retail area with a counter that will have tobacco products as well as electronic cigarette products in it. There's a room that has salt therapy, a salt therapy booth, and then there's a little over, almost, a little over 1,100, almost 1,200 square feet of storage area to the, to the western portion of the building. So that's how the tenant proposes to use the building, and I've got a table here that calculates the required parking for that, because as, as we look at the meeting, the zoning ordinance requirements, it's not just land use and bulk regulations of the building, but there's also off-street parking requirements. And in this case, we have a mixture of retail and storage. Retail is required to have one off-street parking space for every 250 square feet of retail area, and as well as one parking space for every 2,000 square feet of storage area. So in total, the way that the applicant is proposing to use the property, she is required to have six off-street parking spaces. And if you were to look at the site plan, there are 12 proposed off-street parking spaces, which will meet the needs of the applicant. So as we look at whether or not the existing property or the property that the applicant is proposing, the conditional uses, the use in, and whether or not it meets the zoning ordinance, aside from the front and side yard setbacks that are pre-existing non-conforming, the property does meet all of the required zoning requirements. And looking at welfare and convenience of the public, the applicant states that the building is currently vacant, and she's proposing to put a viable business into a vacant space and bring it into productive use. So opponents of tobacco and vaping point out nicotine levels and the addictive properties of nicotine, especially the potential exposure to minors. And so what staff would just request if minors are allowed, because there is some general retail within the business, if minors are allowed into the store, or if they are prohibited from entering the building. Proponents of e-cigarettes in the industry, they argue that e-cigarettes are healthier and safer alternative to tobacco smoking, and therefore could contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public by making a healthier choice that's legal, a convenient option for the public. So the question for you as a commission is whether or not you believe filling this vacant space with the proposed tobacco shop and e-cigarette establishment would contribute to the welfare of the public and would be suitable for the, for the neighborhood. For the neighborhood, what we do is we look at the impact and the potential injury that a proposed conditional use might have to the surrounding property. And this property, as we, as I showed you when we first started the application or talking about the application, is in a strip of commercial, it's the South Santa Fe corridor that has a strip of commercial activities, mix of retail, food service and personal service that leads down to Santa, or down to the end of Santa Fe where you have Kansas Wesleyan University. One of the concerns that typically comes up when we talk about e-cigarettes and the surrounding areas, where are schools, where are residential properties? And in this case, there are residential properties directly adjacent to the west, and there is a university that's a couple blocks to the south. And so that's something for the board to consider. The noticeably of the tobacco shop and the e-cigarette establishment is probably mostly going to be a function of the signage. If you were to drive by a store and you didn't know whether or not they sold tobacco products or vape products, you probably wouldn't know unless there were some indication on the signage and the type of signage it has and the amount of signage it has. Most other vape shops in town have wall signs and window signs, and we would just ask the applicant to kind of indicate what, what she is proposing at this site. I imagine it might be something similar, but that would be something that the commission may want to hear about. Looking at public utilities and service, because this is an established property that has historically been used as, for its commercial activities, there are adequate utilities, drainage and other necessary facilities. So none of those will need, will be needed in this case, and will not increase any additional burden on the public utilities or generate any additional demand for public services. Looking at traffic access and parking, the site does have a paved parking lot as well as an access drive off of South Santa Fe. The parking lot that is proposed by the applicant looks like this with 12 off-street parking spaces. There is a kind of a notch out here. This is actually a separate parcel that is owned by the property to the south here that's off-street parking for their operations. And so the L configuration of the parking for the applicant site requires you to come in off of Santa Fe, and you can either back back out and go out of Santa Fe, or you could use the alley, because there is an alley directly south as well. So there are sufficient off-street parking spaces to meet the needs of the proposed facility, and historically speaking, vape shops, e-cigarette stores, tobacco shops are not heavy generators of traffic. And so because this, this property has been used as a, as a retail site in the past, we don't see that being any different than, we don't see the proposed use being any different in terms of the traffic that would be generated by it. So we do have a list of alternatives for you on page 10. I'll go through them. Number one is you could approve the conditional use permit application, allowing the operator and the applicant to open a tobacco shop and electronic cigarette shop as submitted upon the findings of fact, which we have attached to your packet. And number two, you could approve the conditional use subject to any specific conditions. So it's very similar to number one, but you could add conditions to it. And number three, you could postpone consideration of the application if additional information is needed. And number four, you could deny the application if the necessary findings of fact cannot be made. What we have done with our recommendation is we have used kind of our general list of conditions that we have used in previous electronic cigarette establishments. If you feel like additional conditions are needed, we can add those. If you feel like some of them may not apply in this case, we can remove them as well. But staff does have 10 conditions that we would recommend if you were wanting to approve this application. And so with that, staff will answer any questions, or if you want to go through and go through the 10 conditions, we can do that as well. It's kind of your preference.
Okay. Thank you, Dustin. We got any questions for staff?
I've got a quick question. So out of all of the vape shops that have applied for the conditional use, how many of those are still active and open?
That's a good question. And to be perfectly honest, I'm not 100% sure. I know that, I believe Juicy's at Galaxy Center is still active. I'm not sure about Yogi's and Craft Manor. I don't believe that either Cloud Cafe, which is in Sunset Manor, or Willie's, which is north of Sunset Manor, are currently active. And I don't believe Vapes that was on iron is currently active either. Do you know, Dean?
Yeah.
The question was how many of the, the uses that have been approved are currently active in terms of e-cigarette establishments?
I think only the one on East Iron and Juicy's have been long-lived, and as far as I know, Juicy's is the only one that's still open.
So at current, we have one that's still active in Salina?
Yeah, I'm not 100% on that, but I, I think you might be right on that.
Okay.
Yogi's is still active.
Okay, that's Megan. She's the applicant, and she says Yogi's is still active.
So that's the one in Craft Manor?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else got any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Have the surrounding businesses been contacted about this project, and have you received approval?
Well, we have not received any approval. We have not received any feedback at all. But yes, we did send property owner letters to everyone within 200 feet of the property, of the subject property that is. And we also did our notification in the Salina Journal for anyone who tracks that, that legal notice that we, we do for all of our conditional uses and rezonings.
Okay. I just got one. Been a long time Salina, and everybody remembers the House of Sight and Sound, and the House of Sight and Sound was pretty much, almost, I would almost say just identical about what they're wanting to put in, the way some of the stuff they were doing there. The north side of the building used to have parking places there when the House of Sight and Sound and when the strip club was there and the places that were other there. Are those going to be utilized, or they're not going to use those for parking spaces, or?
So there are some head-in parking stalls that typically are not allowed on the north side of Ellsworth. And as to the, the subject property, they're only required to have six off-street parking spaces, and they have 12. So what it looks like to us is that they have sufficient parking within their, within their, their parking lot without having to use the parking stalls in the right way.
Okay.
Now, if somebody were to pull in there, then they pull in there. I mean, that space is there, that inset of the curb along the street is there. So it's, it's, until it goes away, it could potentially be used.
Those spaces are grandfathered, but we cannot count them towards off-street parking because they're not off-street, they're on-street. So.
Okay.
They're not, they don't count towards meeting the businesses' off-street parking needs, but they are legal to continue to use.
Okay. Any more questions for staff?
Yeah, I do have a question for you real quick. So on the, what you have up currently, you had said something about that south entrance was going to be the main entrance? In that building, I've always thought that northwest or northeast corner was always the main entrance in off of Santa Fe into that building.
Yeah, and that's a good question. I'd imagine both might be used, but we can have the applicant speak to kind of how, how she envisions that setup working. That's, that's a fair question.
Okay. Would the applicant like to speak to this?
Um, yes, the court will be, I'm sorry, I have to voice. The court that will be used will be the north east corner. We will only have one access point because we need to be able to properly card and identify every person that comes in.
So I'll, I'll pull that graphic up again, just so everybody can see what Megan is speaking of. So she said the northeast corner, so that's this here off of Santa Fe. So this door will not be an entry point, but rather the northeast corner off of Santa Fe so that they can control their access better into the building.
So does fire code say anything about having to have a second exit out of the premises?
The fire department hasn't looked at this per se. They have looked at this as a retail building in the past, and it has met their requirements. And so what you'll see is these, these arrows here. And so these are potential egress points, and there's three of them. So that, that would be sufficient. It's been used as a retail shop in the past. So from a fire code standpoint, this shouldn't have any, any changes to it.
So has the applicant, have they seen the 10 recommendations? Have they?
The applicant did receive a copy of the staff report. I have not communicated with her since we sent this out. So if there are any questions about any of those, or if she would like to chime in on, on her thoughts, that would be great.
Yeah, I'd like to find out if she has any objections to the 10 recommendations that the staff recommended for this property.
What page was that on? I'm sorry.
That'll be on page 10 and 11.
Okay, I did read through those. Actually, we already have the unaccompanied minors under the age of 18 in place. The business operating hours is completely fine. And the signage is, yes, everything on that is.
Okay, then on page 11, on page 11, there's the rest of them? Okay, then on page 11, on page 11, there's the other, the rest of them?
Yes, we do agree to all of the conditions.
Is there anything else you'd like to to add?
I I can't see anybody's face.
Any more questions? Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I have, I have one. Megan, do you have experience in operating this type of establishment in the past?
We actually have one that's been operating for four years over in Abilene. And we have another one that's been operating for just over a year and a half in McPherson.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. There's no more. Is there anybody online that would like to comment?
If anyone online would like to speak, we could have a, have you unmute and then we can hear what you have to say if they have anything to add. It does not look like anyone online wants to speak on this matter.
Okay, since there's no public comment or no other questions, I'll bring it back to the commission for the recommendation.
I guess the only discussion that I would have on this is prior to, and I guess I'm the one that typically does this on the vape shops, is the timeframe part of it. I guess I'm not really in favor of putting limitations on time on the businesses open. We've got a bar across the street that's going to be open till past that timeframe. And it's kind of like, again, if you do something that's a citywide thing, we're doing a late-night thing, maybe the university's doing something and they wanted to be able to have it open and be able to do that. If you limit the time, they wouldn't be able to do that. So I guess I would be in favor of taking number two off of the staff recommendations.
Dustin, what is, have we made this on the other vape landers in town? The time recommendation?
Yes, yes.
And and they're currently operating under the age of 12?
I believe so. I have to go check that specific case file to confirm that 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 is the case still.
Last two were not because I made the recommendation not to limit their hours.
Those were tattoo parlors.
Oh, was that the tattoo parlor?
Yeah.
Those were not vape shops.
Gotcha. Okay.
But yes, we had that exact same conversation for those applications.
Okay.
And so this, yeah, this is a complete discretionary item for the board. So if if you feel like that just isn't relevant to this location and you want to have that removed, that's that's completely your discretion.
I agree with Commissioner Olson. To me, it just, it's contrary to the spirit of the free market economy. And if they want to stay open later than those those confines, I would be fine with that.
I mean, I would assume that in most situations, they're not going to just because it doesn't make sense. You're not staff, you have to pay staff during that timeframe. But I think it just limits it. I mean, I could see something where Kansas, you know, Kansas Wesleyan's doing an all-night type thing and they want to be able to be open during that same timeframe. If we have a limitation, they wouldn't be able to do it.
I agree.
So we need a recommend area?
I guess I would, what I would do is I would make a motion to approve application CU 21-11 with the recommendations from staff on page 10 and 11, except for recommendation number two for the hours of operation.
I would second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this?
Mr. Bernhardt, right, Commissioner Bernhardt, did you second that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, no more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Six, six is zero, yep, all six. Thank you.
So Megan, we will, there is a 14-day protest period. And if after that 14-day protest period, we do not have a successful petition to protest the decision of the planning commission, then your conditional use permit will be approved and we will send you an approval letter. And then after that, you can commence business with the electronic cigarette operations and smoke shop operations or tobacco shop operations.
Okay, we shall move on.
So application item 3.2 is a combination application item where there is a proposed text amendment or map amendment to the future land use map as well as a proposed map amendment to the zoning map. And so I'll pull that, I'll pull up a graphic and we'll have a brief discussion on that item here. So Michelle Hightower Marovic came to staff and inquired about rezoning a vacant property which she had purchased and owns that is currently zoned R1, single-family residential. And she wanted to rezone that property to C2 in order for her to put up a commercial building. And in looking at this, the R1 district does not allow for commercial buildings, hence the rezoning request. And in addition to that, the future land use map of the property shows it as a, pull it up here. Shows it as a suburban residential. And that future land use designation does not allow for commercial activities either. And so she proposed both the rezoning as well as a future land use map amendment to have this property be shown as commercial on the future land use map. Now, the property along along Crawford are part of a subdivision that was platted in the 1950s with several homes being built in the early 50s as well. And all of these properties were originally residential. So as you go along Crawford today, you'll notice that there are a number of commercial properties that front on Crawford and they're rather shallow or small. And the reason for that is because the original development of this property was intended for single-family homes or residential housing. And there were houses constructed in the 1950s. In 1963, there was a large storm tornado event that happened in this area. And many of the houses and structures were either damaged or removed. So if you were to look out there today, you'll notice that there are gaps in in different areas. And that's because homes were removed and they haven't been built back. And in the early 70s, some of the properties, particularly those along Crawford, were were zoned to, zoned for commercial activities and for commercial uses. So if we were to pull up a zoning map, you would see that the strip, basically, the properties that front directly on Crawford are zone C5 while the rest of the properties to the south remain residential today. And in 2010, the, so that that addresses kind of the first item, item A. And then there's another item that will, that I'll talk about and then we can vote on them separately. So that that kind of is the history of the zoning along Crawford. And then you also have the future land use map that is also along Crawford. And in 2010, the city of Salina adopted a new comprehensive plan. That comprehensive plan had all of those properties that were originally residential shown as suburban residential on it. So the strip of red that's along the south side of Crawford originally was a yellow color. And in 2013, in order to preserve the investment that owners of the commercial properties had made, the planning commission reclassified the future land use map for the, made a map amendment for those properties that are zoned C5 to have a future land use classification. So if you were to look at the zoning map today and the future land use map, you'll notice that the C5 area matches the commercial area on the future land use map. And that was done to, again, preserve the investment and to make sure that those commercial properties that are commercial, that the the owners have a protected right to continue to use them as commercial properties and that it incentivizes any future owners to continue to maintain them well so that they can remain viable. So that's how the C5 and the commercial land use category came to be along the south side of of Crawford. Now, that's kind of the backstory. The actual application itself, the application or the applicant has informed us that they wish to withdraw both of these applications. And so what we'll need to do is for item 3.2A and then after that, 3.2B is open a public hearing for both of those items and then accept the withdrawal or note that it's been withdrawn. So we still need to to open the public hearing because we did advertise the public hearing for each of these items, but there is no action that the commission needs to make. So with that, we'll just see if anybody from the public wants to speak to either of these items. And I don't see anyone online or anyone in the room to do that to comment on the items, that is. So I think Commissioner Hay, if you just want to open the public hearing and then acknowledge that no one wants to speak, then we can close the public hearing and acknowledge that it's been withdrawn and move on to item 3.3.
Okay, we will open the public hearing for item 3.2. And since there's nobody would like to speak on that item, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for action.
I don't think it would require a formal motion. If the chair just wants to acknowledge that the commission is accepting the applicant's withdrawal, then that would be sufficient.
So on 3.2, the commission will accept the withdrawal of the applicant's application?
So that would bring us to item 3.3 and that is a legislative matter. And this is an application that was initiated by the city planning commission in 2020. And it got put on the back burner and now has been picked up again. But this this is an application that's requesting the consideration of an amendment to the Salina zoning ordinance to establish regulations for short-term RV parking as opposed to what we currently have on the books, which is a recreational campground. And so back in 1991, the city did a comprehensive review of our manufactured home parks and subdivision standards. And as part of that, there was a third section that was created for recreational campgrounds. And so to be in a manufactured home subdivision or a manufactured home park, you have to have a manufactured home unit that meets the HUD code that's permanently placed on a foundation on the ground. But the recreational campground was designed for people who might be transient but needed a campground to reside in. But it was more designed for things who might be a temporary construction worker or people that might live in the campground for six months to a year. And so our current standards require things like service buildings with restrooms and showers, storm shelters. There's a minimum requirement that a campground have two acres of area. And there's only been one recreational campground proposed inside the city limits since that was adopted. And that request was not approved. So there's currently no recreational vehicle campgrounds inside the city limits. But there's also a situation where you have people who are vacationers or travelers and they're traveling cross-country or extended distances and they are only looking for a place for an overnight stay or a two-night stay. And so they they have a different level of services that they need and desire. And of course, many RVs are, have self-contained facilities. They're not looking for recreation areas. They're not looking for showers or laundries or those types of things. And so last year, we were contacted by a couple businesses that were looking to establish RV parks for limited overnight RV parking as an accessory use to their main business. And so our our one-size-fits-all for campgrounds doesn't really fit that business model. And so we have identified the need to go in and amend the zoning ordinance to allow for that type of facility. So the amendment that staff has has drafted for your consideration is not intended to address all overnight stay venue issues. It's designed to address the market desire for short-term RV parking, which doesn't require all the level of space or service that a campground would require. So many truck stops have turned into travel centers. We also have hotels and motels that have spaces and and facilities available. And so what this is designed to accommodate is if a travel center or hotel or motel wanted to develop an accessory or secondary use, an RV park, that would be something that they could apply for that would be addressed through a conditional use permit. And so at the same time, it's not going to open up every commercial lot in Salina to overnight parking because it would be approved through a conditional use permit. So the city of Abilene recently adopted a similar text amendment to accommodate an RV park that's at the 24/7 Travel Center at North Buckeye and I-70. And if you drive to Manhattan or east, you go by it all the time. And I think Dustin has some, we have some photographs or graphics of that that we can share with you. But this this is an overview, an aerial photo. And so the the 24/7 Travel Center is is to the upper right corner there and there's parking lot for trucks. And then there's a kind of a separation there and a gated entry. And so that is an area that's set aside for RV parking. And so instead of us trying to adopt or draft a whole laundry list of requirements, the idea is to give you the discretion to establish individual limits and conditions on a case-by-case, location-by-location basis. So if you could go back to the the text amendment again, Dustin. So essentially, it essentially allows for an application to be filed if you are an existing hotel, motel, truck stop or travel piza. It won't, it's not considered to be a recreational campground. It's not subject to those requirements, except as may be required by conditions imposed by the planning commission. But essentially, it says that you, in reviewing this, you can impose limits on the total number of spaces, the continuous nights or rental use, how long can vehicles be there, and any other kind of limitations or requirements that you think are important in that particular case. I do think we have an example, Dustin, of the conditions that were in place on the Abilene operation. So when the planning commission in Abilene reviewed this, this is those 10 conditions there. As part of their action reviewing the plan, the Abilene Planning Commission imposed these conditions that the the park is limited to 22 spaces. No one can be there for more. No one can be there for more than seven consecutive days. They can't have open fires on the premises. One of the things that was considered to be important is, and was promised by the applicant, is that the people staying there would have access to the travel service facility 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There was a requirement that it be physically set off and separated from the travel plaza. They required that a marked and lighted path be provided between the parking area and the 24/7 convenience store. They didn't want to allow for tents. They required that the two operations stay under the same ownership and operation so that one would be accessory to the other. And then they required that individual water sewer and electrical hookups be provided for each space. So again, rather than trying to draft things like this into a code, our approach is to allow the use to look at the proposal and then allow the commission to craft whatever limitations or requirements you want to pose in that circumstance. So most of our interchange areas around the community are either Zone C5 or C7, so we were limiting it to that, those zone properties. I do believe we have, I guess, we have Makesh Patel online. He's the owner of a hotel in the community and is most interested in this text amendment and what it could allow for his motel operation out at West Crawford and I-70. So first thing I'll do is see if the planning commission has any questions about our report, and then if not, we could hear from Mr. Patel.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
I've got a couple. What's the difference between what we're talking about here and what we do at the Tony's Pizza Event Center where we got the RV hookups during the shows and different things that they've got over there?
It would be very comparable to that, except that is tied in with that event center. It's an interesting situation over there where the Tony's Pizza Event Center has actually zoned C3 Shopping Center District, and the planning commission helped create a new zoning district for the Tony's Pizza Event Center that allowed for that overnight parking. But the zoning of that has not been changed to the new designation yet. So there is a provision for an event center like that to have accessory overnight parking. But what we're talking about here, facility-wise, would be almost identical to what they have south of the Tony's Pizza Event Center. Marked spaces, electrical, water sewer hookups.
So is the, over by the Webster Conference Center, they got that, is that county then?
That's in the county, but again, what we're talking about here would be very similar to that. It's just that that's...
That's a long-term over there, though.
Yes, they don't have the time limits on it like we're talking here, which is more short-term or overnight stays.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
And we just prefer to use the term short-term rather than say overnight because overnight means one thing and short-term can mean something else, so.
Okay. We'll hear from...
So, Makesh, do you want to kind of speak to your interest in your property and what you think of this proposed amendment?
Sure, yeah. Hi, everyone. I have just, you know, a couple question and couple item to, you know, address on that. You know, as Dean mentioned, you know, the seven days, I like to have a 10 days since, you know, we have a several event in town, Salina Fire and Iron that we host, and also car show we host. Most of the time, we see the people, they're living, you know, their RVs and trailer, and they like to, you know, stay more than seven days, about 10 days. So if it would be changed to 10 days, that would be great. That's one of my requests. Also, one correction that we are not on I-70. I don't know, it's not a big issue, but we are on Crawford Street, just to make a change on the...
Yeah. I went 35 in Crawford.
Okay. So that's one thing. And also, I didn't see anything about, you know, the slot. It should be concrete or we are allowed to use the gravel as well. That's the one question I have for you, Dean.
Okay. And Abilene, they required that the spaces to be paved? And that is, it was not, I don't believe it was prescriptive in the ordinance, but I'll have to go back and check. And if that was an oversight, that we'll have to address that. But to be consistent with what they had done, their requirement was that the spaces be paved.
Okay. Yeah, I went to his and they have a gravel. And since it is, you know, just overnight, kind of a short term, so if it is, you know, gravel, I don't see any problem. It's cost-effective for us as a business owner. So I'd like to propose, you know, there can be change made into this one to gravel. That would be great. It would be more convenient and cost-effective for us.
Can you show the location of where they're at, Dustin?
Yeah.
So it's, my understanding is that they're looking to an area in here to establish an RV parking area at that, at that location.
Okay, north and, you know, if you just go a little bit west of the building as well, the green area, yeah, that, that also, you know, part of the RV parking. It's both side.
You're looking at both sides or one side?
It will be both side. I don't know if you can see my pointer, but start right from here, like the, that area and the other side. Yes, that area as well, yeah. Correct. Both areas.
Dustin, can you zoom out just a little bit? I'm trying to get a better idea where it's at.
Oh, boy.
I got you now. Okay. I know where we're at.
Okay. Yeah, I see Westport's in there now. That's just made it a lot easier to... The old red coach, the old red coach, your quality.
Yes. Old red coach, and now it's quality next to it.
And commercial tire is to the west of you, correct?
Yeah, correct, yeah. Yes, that one, yes. And also, Dean, you know, on Abilene, they have a limit of 22, and we have proposed 28. I don't know, is this going to be a big matter for City of Salina? I know it's 22 or 28 limit because we proposed 28 on our plan.
So I have a question back to you, Dean. So just to be clear, for us at this point in time, because he has an interest in it, we're truly not making recommendations for this applicant at this point in time.
No. This is, this is...
Ours is strictly for the...
What this would do is it would, it would give businesses such as that who are situated at interstate interchanges, whether it was 24/7 convenience store in Salina or a hotel or motel that wanted to apply to add that, it would give them a mechanism to apply. And then the only, you have discretion in that area. The only thing I would note is that in the C5 and C7 districts, all parking areas, driveways, driving aisles have to be paved with asphalt or concrete. So to do something different than that in a commercial district might cause some confusion. But it is, it is, it's your discretion of whether that, that should be a standard or not, but that could be addressed on a, again, on a, we didn't attempt to write all the rules into the code. We essentially said that this is to be distinguished between a recreational campground is something that you can apply for through a conditional use permit, and you can approve it or not approve it, or you can put any conditions or limitations on it that you think are appropriate for that site. Some sites are tight, and maybe they can only have eight spaces. Some are maybe really large and they maybe have 30 spaces. That's, that's a judgment for you when you get the application. But approving this or recommending that it be added would simply provide an avenue for a business owner to apply and for you to review. Right now, we don't have a way for them to even apply for this use.
I guess the only, the only problem I have with is even in our residential, I mean, we know, we don't allow, you know, the gravel parking for recreational vehicles or anything like that being in the, like you said, the C...
These are C5 and C7 districts.
C7, you know, I think if we took and made a exception in those, in the C5 and C7, I think we'd have a lot of throwback or a lot of upset people where we've already made, you know, them have the...
I agree.
The paved areas. Go back on that, I think we have...
So Abilene just simply said that it was subject to the same standards as parking lots and driveways in terms of paving. And so...
Because of the areas where they're located around convenience store or travel centers and everything else that already have parking.
Yeah, they already have paving all around them, so.
So I guess my question going back to staff then would be is, I mean, and I understand the reasoning for doing this as a conditional use permit, but that means that every time that somebody wants to come in, they're going to have to file this, it's going to have to come back in front of us to make a decision, make recommendations. Are we going to do this for this one? Are we going to do this for that one? City had kind of, we had that process with the, like, the food trucks and the food court types of things, and then we ended up going in and saying, okay, with the online application through the city, you can go in and the farmer's market type situations where you said, okay, here's the standards. And instead of having to come back every year in front of us to do that, I guess I'm looking at is, does it really make more sense? I understand not wanting to write everything up initially, but it would make the process easier for applicants instead of drawing it out that if, hey, you're going to do this, and now we need to go in front of the planning commission if we didn't do it similar to Abilene and say, okay, here's the requirements, here's what you're going to have to do. And if you follow those requirements, you can get approval through the city staff, doesn't have to come in front of the planning. And then if they want to do something different, then the exception would come back to us, no different than kind of what we're doing on other things.
Well, to me, it, you're looking at almost like a, you're looking at a facility that's going to house people and a bunch of equipment and stuff. And I think it does need to go through us and each one of them be a little bit different. I applaud the idea of being able to do something in a simpler, simpler form and apply for things online. But this one, it seems like it would need fire department approval, for example. You know, wastewater, what are you going to do with all the sewer hookups and that kind of thing? It seems a little bit more involved than that, but I don't know.
There should be no sewer hookups while we're talking here.
Well, many of these facilities have a sewer dump station.
Yeah.
And so, yes, our utilities department and our billing services departments are involved in that already. I guess it's not envisioned that once this is approved that you have to renew it. It's simply, it's approved. The other thing that a conditional use permit does that is it, it gives neighboring businesses an opportunity to know and an opportunity to be heard in advance in case they want to have any input or provide any feedback to the commission. We can, we can certainly take that approach. We haven't, we don't have any, we haven't found any communities that did take that approach. What we're, the difference between this and what's out by the Webster Conference Center is that this is something that has to be accessory to a use that's already established there. You couldn't just go out in a vacant lot and create one. This is, this is tied in with an existing business operation. But those would be the two alternative approaches. One would be to, to take this approach and address it on a case-by-case basis through an application. The other approach would be to send staff back to the drawing board and try to, to come up with a prescriptive set of standards. But then if, as suggested, we, we guess wrong and we say, you're limited to seven days, well, we want 10. You're limited to this many spaces, well, we want this many, then you're in a situation where it's theoretically got to come to the planning commission because they want to do something different than what was adopted. So that's, that's the two sides of the coin.
And as, right now, there's just no avenue for them to...
Yeah, this, this is to create an avenue for them to do this. We actually worked really closely with the, the staff from Abilene came over to Salina and worked with us on their version when they, and then we attempted, we were going to follow suit, and then we got short-staffed and short-meeting and all that. So we set this aside, and now we've, we've picked it back up again because there's interest from the business community, so.
And I think it'd be better probably also if we had it on a case-by-case basis. That would, I mean, there's so many different...
There's a lot of different sizes, shapes of locations, and so it's, it's kind of difficult to write a one-size-fits-all set of standards because I think we adopt something and then, like Mr. Patel mentioned, he would prefer to do gravel. He would rather have 10 days, those types of things. So the minute we adopt something, we say, this is good, we could have an application that simply doesn't fit those parameters. And then the, we either say no, or we create a mechanism to go to a body to get something different, which would end up bringing it to you anyway.
Large number of RVs on the road today, it seems like, with no other avenue to do this, it seems like it'd be a good thing for Salina to have more places to park.
Yeah, and it, it puts them overnight in Salina. It helps with hotels, motels, and travel centers to make them an attraction to be an overnight stay. Have additional potential restaurant patrons or other types of patrons by having them stay overnight here instead of somewhere else.
Well, I think anything that's going to allow a business another avenue to increase their cash flow is just going to be a good thing for everybody. And there is a trend now with people buying vans and then customizing them and driving across the country and staying. So some of these might not just be RVs, it might be some of those modified vans. And I think there's definitely a need, so definitely in favor of some kind of...
You've got baby boomers selling their homes and going...
Sprinter class.
No. I see the appeal. COVID played a big, a big part in selling RVs and stuff like that now, so there are a lot, people are traveling more and using the RVs. So, I mean, I don't think we're going to have 10 or 15 applications at one time come in wanting to do it. So I think, you know, on a case-to-case basis, I think this would be, you know, the way to go.
All right. Well, I've been convinced then. Well, you're, we've laid out your alternatives there on the second page of your report. And so you could recommend that this text amendment be approved as drafted and presented. You could recommend approval with any additions or deletions or revisions to the language that a majority of commissioners believe need to be made. You could postpone consideration to allow either staff or business owners such as Mr. Patel to provide additional information. Or you could recommend that we stay with the status quo and limit people to extended stay campgrounds.
You ready for a motion?
You and Duda, you want me to?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman and I would make a motion that we approve the text amendment as presented for both the C5 and C7 districts.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes 6-0. Thank you.
Okay. Makesh, that is a recommendation. It'll go on to... Okay. Makesh, that is a recommendation. It'll go on to the city commission for actual consideration of a drafted ordinance, and we'll let you know when that date is.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Dean, it says we have no administrative items?
Yeah, we have no other business. I was just going to clarify a couple things that we didn't get added in our report about vape shops. And this is just a, just kind of an update on, I think there are, the City of Salina limits, treats vaping and smoking equally in public parks. But elsewhere, it's a, it's not, vaping is not subject to the city's smoking ordinance. So, then it's an individual business decision whether they want to allow indoor vaping. So, indoor smoking is prohibited by code. Indoor vaping is not prohibited by code, but individual businesses may prohibit it. The other thing is that the, the federal government passed a law that raised the age limit for vaping to 21. The state of Kansas still has age 18 on the books. What the federal government has said is that they will, states who don't raise their age to 21 will have potential funding cutoffs or things of that nature. So, there's about a dozen cities in Kansas that have individually taken action to raise the age to 21. The city of Salina is not one of them. The Kansas Legislature had a bill that they passed out of committee last session to raise, raise the age to 21, but it never made it to the floor for a vote. It may very well come back this year. But it's, it's a fairly fluid and confusing situation where you have federal law that says the age is 21, state law says it's 18, and you have individual cities that have the age of 21. So, it's, it's a, it's an, it's an activity and industry that continues to be subject to legislative changes and whims. So, we do our best to try to stay up with it. But right now, it's age 18, and that's the way we addressed it in our report, so. As far as other matters, we will have a meeting on the 21st before Christmas. And we have one item scheduled for that meeting. And then we'll try to do our, our best to let you know about whether we'll meet on January 3rd or not. But the, we will need to have a meeting in January so that we can review an annual report of this year's activities and do an attendance report. And each, the city commission requires each advisory board to prepare a report on their previous year's activities, their membership attendance, what, what they did or didn't accomplish. So, we'll prepare something for that review to occur in January. We, we just can't say for sure whether we'll be meeting on the 3rd or not. And then Mr. Linkowitz is going to transition to a different role starting the 10th of January. So, he'll have to step down and we'll try to find an able replacement. So, this mayor, if he comes next week, that will probably be his last meeting and he transitions, so.
Okay.
But as, as it stands right now, we'll be back here two weeks from today. And I do have a set of minutes over here for the chair to sign.
Okay. Is there anybody online that would like to public forum?
I think Mr. Patel is the only one with us still. So, if he has anything else to add, he may. Otherwise, we don't have anyone else from the public.
If not, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Sub move.
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll see you guys on the 21st.